Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order with the planning board. Planning board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded and pursuant to governor, the governor's COVID-19 orders. You can attend this meeting either in person or hybrid and we're doing both through Zoom. So I think on that sign-in sheet, you should put the people that are attending by Zoom as well. So we do actually have a quorum tonight. There's the three of us, Bill Homans, Christopher Monroe, myself, Alice Lipton, and we have Francois Stiger, who's attending remotely.
And Erica.
And Erica, Dak, who's our alternate member. So I want to make, any of you that are just public comments, you don't think so because I recognize you, okay? I want to make an announcement as the chair before we sign these agendas, and that is we are look, they are looking for a member from the planning board to serve on the ARPA, the ARPA, am I saying that right? Which is the federal funds, the COVID funds that are coming to the town. It's a lot of money. It's like 750,000. One bunch of money and a second bunch of money have almost had same amount to be spent on fairly broad categories, including lost revenue, infrastructure and so on. So does anybody, does anyone on the committee want to do that? Francois, I don't know that it's, that you have a remote option on it. So.
We have until January 2024 to send money or to make decisions.
But it probably, it might be a daytime meeting.
I'd be happy to do it too.
Okay.
Can we fight it out now?
I don't think it's gonna be a daytime meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay, because David didn't know. He said, well, I won't go after eight.
Can you both be on the same committee?
Yes, because it's us on the quorum.
Okay.
Great. So do we have one? So which of you guys are gonna do this?
I'll paper scissors.
I'm happy to do it.
No, it's fine. Go ahead.
Okay. So we'll select him as our member to the ARPA committee. All in motion. Okay, I second it.
Well, there was already a motion and a vote on that where it's the chair's authority to just designate.
Appoint someone? Okay, chair hereby designates you as the member to the ARPA committee. Have fun. Also, I would, I did talk to David a little about it, and I know they're interested. One of his high priorities is fixing broadband in this town. So.
We have that here?
And the tower, the tower is apparently already paid for by another source, but getting the private provider companies onto the tower is something he definitely wants to do. Okay, minutes. Mallory has announcements with the minutes. We finally have somebody that's gonna do them.
We've hired someone to get them all done, so.
So we're quite behind on them, but we'll move on. We have two A and R plans tonight. The first is Tatten, land on by Tatten on Cruz Road. And that's Alex who's here. Yeah. Okay, so we had some questions, but we went through them. This is, that's this plan. And what these people are doing, you can, you can tell, tell more. It has a house lot on it. I have a printout of it here too, but.
Basically, the Tattens are cutting out the existing house, 16 Cruz Road with a little over five and a half acres and keeping the rest of the 40-plus acres in the trust. And the remaining land has exactly 200 feet of frontage and the lot that's being cut out has just over 200 feet of acres.
So that's the old farmhouse and the new house?
The old farmhouse is actually back here. This was the new warehouse that, that, that the old man.
They keep in the old house?
That's a separate piece on its own. That's, that's in the process of being sold too, but I believe they have a PNS for the, for the newer house. The, the, the old farmhouse, the new little, little loft.
Yeah, it's old TLC.
Yeah, but we should find somebody.
So I did our, our checklist of all the things to be included. And then I, I misread. If you look at this plan closely, it looks, it looked like me didn't have enough frontage. You only had 150, but the, the extra frontage is beyond the wall, which is usually, you know, you think of them.
Yeah, it's like, it's like a, like a lane wall, like two walls that go in a little bit.
So anyway, it does meet all this other criteria. I took, you know, the boundaries of North Point, this whole list, and went through them one by one. So I think we're ready to sign that plan. And I'm thinking that we could just do the other plan and then we only have to line up once. So you want to wait just one minute?
Sure.
The other plan. Oh, we do have to have a vote. Are there any more questions regarding this plan? Okay.
I'll make that motion.
To prove the Tatten Road or the Cruz Road planned by Tatten? Okay.
I second the motion.
Okay, we got one of the two of us. Okay. I guess because we're this hybrid, we should say our names. So Lipton, I.
Monroe, I.
Bill Homans, I.
I agree.
Okay, it's approved. So we will sign it and we only need the, the three signatures, correct? You see a simple majority, so we'll do the same with the other. It's great because I don't have to run around town with it that way. The other piece of land is familiar. You guys will recognize it because it's, it's, although it's changed hands, it's the Halfridge Road Lot that we did, remember that went through to both sides of the road about just before Thanksgiving and then we had this issue getting our sign, our, this lot we approved, which was the end of the farmhouse, the farm. Other pieces had been conveyed out. And what the new person is doing is dividing this lot into two lots. So there's a lot with frontage on Halfy Road and a lot with frontage on Worcester Road. And that's what shows there. So an awful lot of these foundries we had looked at earlier. It's really this dividing line. But I did go again through all the checklists of everything that's on it.
I think Bill has something to say on it.
Okay. Yeah, I had a question for the surveyor, but he's not here, right?
We have Mark Demick on.
Before Bill comes on, Mark, is there a building on either of these lots? He's muted.
He was traveling, so he was gonna try to log in.
Mark, you're muted.
This is Mark.
Demick.
Demick. All right, well, maybe we'll catch up. I'm sure there's not actually, but I would just like to hear it from him. There's none indicated on the plan. Bill, you have questions?
I don't think that this lot 41A is entitled to endorsement because they just reestablished guardrails along its entire frontage on Route 68, Worcester Road. And it has wetlands along a portion of its frontage. And I forwarded to Mallory earlier today from the A and R handbook that says if you have an impediment like that, they don't have the actual frontage until they actually get a permit from Mass DOT to remove the guardrail. So they don't have access to the lot that's being proposed above Route 68. I don't think that they're entitled to A and R endorsement until they do.
Okay, so I need to tell him, I'm glad I sent it to you, that he needs. So there's, I was wondering about the guardrail. That's all, you know, I was gonna take actually a drive up there, but it's hard to figure out, you know, when it's vacant land, exactly where it starts. But you say there's guard, there's a guardrail across the whole front of it?
Entire frontage, yeah. And I forwarded to you from the A and R handbook.
Yeah, you got it.
The citation, the citation in the, not the, the appeals court, but the state Supreme Court ruled that your frontage, you can't have the, just the ability does not give you actual frontage. You have to have a way to break that guardrail to create the frontage.
So how is that? It probably tells me in the note, but I didn't see it. You petition the state?
Yeah, that's a mass DOT controlled road and you have to have permission to break their guardrail, put it in a driveway. Plus, they have wetlands along the entire frontage of that property or through portions of that property. So they have a couple of hurdles. Wetlands are not an impediment, but the guardrail and steep slopes are.
Okay, I had looked at the wetlands, but so they have more than indicated on the overlay from Axis GIS?
Yeah, there are some streams in there, intermittent streams.
All right, all right. I know that's a broad picture. Okay, so we cannot sign that plan. Can you get hold of Mark though?
Yeah.
Mark, are you available? All right, well, I'll write him a letter and I'll include your email with it. So we, we're not gonna sign the one. You want to roll that one up?
I think you need to make a motion and a vote not to endorse.
Okay.
Not to endorse.
Okay, until we get clarification on the frontage issue. Okay. I'll second it. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay.
Hold them black.
Monroe, I.
Lipton, I.
Stiger, I.
Okay, we'll sign one and we'll wait on the other one.
Do you have that elastic? Is it over here?
You know, what we should tell him is though, if he wants to come back, well, he can't come back with the one lot.
It is one lot.
It is one lot. And that's already been signed. We did it. So I don't know. We'll figure it out. Okay, these we can sign in sequence here. Where's the box? Oh, here. Okay.
That one's not, I was using this one right there.
I use your standard both.
We'll use the thinner ones. The other one's like a paintbrush.
I'm sure.
Yep, but.
This five is, we can put, that's one of the lines, right?
No.
Yeah.
I'm sure. And we can be outside.
What is today's date?
Today is the 16th. Oh, nice.
How many of these do you want signed?
Let's get Sarah's on it. Yeah.
Let's actually do the my lot.
And let's get up in the bathing stage after I'm done.
But once it's done, you'll have a lot of work.
How easy is it to, you solve it?
You know what? Here, your own estimation. Well, I didn't get started. That other one, I'll check it and make sure it's not like a paintbrush.
Then that's pretty sought after.
Yeah.
They're pretty sought after. They're red. So, well, pandemic is what people are calling it. Everybody got it. It's very pandemic. Yeah.
I don't know if it's stuck in.
Right. Yeah, no, no.
No more.
Do you ever keep any? You kept one, Bill? Did you keep the fluffy one? No? Oh, she was so sweet.
Hey, Mallory?
Four girls.
Mallory?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I want me, on my cell phone, I can't see any of your buttons. I got Mark Demick on the other, on the phone, and he can't unmute himself somehow.
He can't unmute himself?
Yeah.
Can you?
Can he? You can try it, yeah.
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, there's the state law precedent that says if you have a guardrail and steep slopes, you're not entitled to A and R endorsement until you get permission to remove the guardrail for a driveway. Okay, that's fine, yeah. There's wetlands on a property, but they don't go the whole frontage, so maybe. No. Two thirds of it. Yeah. The wetlands are not, are not a showstopper, but the guardrail is. Okay, so I'll just have to apply the state to remove the guardrail. Correct. Okay. All right, I will pass that on to the board. All right, thanks, Mark. Bye. Mallory, can you hear me?
Kinda, you're kinda breaking up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mark said that he heard what the board said and he will go to the state and get permission to break the guardrail and come back.
Sounds like a plan. You can pick up your plan from Mallory for safekeeping in the meantime.
Yeah, he can't, he doesn't know how to unmute himself, so I think he heard you though, Alice.
Okay. You want to grab him and wrap him, roll him up?
I would love to.
Band is right.
I can do it too if you want.
What do we need to keep one, right? What do we need to keep here? And what can he take?
We, he needs him. Are we, yeah, we keep one of, two of the signature pages that have, yeah, you take those, yeah.
The assessor and you, you keep one and the assessor gets one.
Yeah.
Yeah, give the rest back to him and then he can hand one to his supplier or something. We only need to fill those three there. He only, he only need to.
The fingers are dry. Oh, you're right. Almost stolen actually, I'm sorry.
Well, you can probably run past that.
Turn on your video.
And you can use the clip, Bill, for mine if you want.
I wanted to watch it. Usually have one. Yeah, I'm kidding.
We have plenty.
Just clip the end of it and that's good enough.
Yeah, I don't need it. Clip is perfect for me because I'm just gonna fold it when I get back to the office. Thank you.
How's that?
Beautiful. You're the best. Don't care what they say about you. Take care, Alex.
You too. Thanks, thanks, Alex. Okay, so the next, we have, both of the next two items on the agenda involve 28 George Howard Road. The first one's an informal presentation, and that's by Allison Muirhead, Clayton Edwards, and Daniel Bigga. And sadly, they were here on the second and couldn't get Zoom to work, so they're back again. So you have to start from scratch, right? So I did want to, so though, talked to the board just before we did anything that, this is actually, your lot is on the Watershed Protection Act Viewer map. Are you guys aware of this? So I had copies made. Do you want, there, it should be in your file. So they own, correct, or the person that's selling this owns, what's in the black? It jogs around here. They don't own this corner piece, but they own on both sides of George Howard Road. And I'm not, and the key is there's the zone one, which is 200 feet, the yellow zone, zone two, watershed protection. And then all of the orange is, I believe, people can correct me if I'm wrong, is a watershed preservation restriction that covers this whole light, lighter yellow piece. So the only piece that would be developable with really developable, I mean, you can still farm it, I guess, but would be the white part of it? Is that your understanding as well, roughly?
Essentially the pieces that are in the watershed.
All right.
The white part, yeah, the white part actually should go further.
You can have one of these.
Actually go up further towards Venus Road.
Okay, well, I know these are not, they, they're just.
I think it's a little.
I believe it connects right up to Venus Road.
It goes right up to there.
Because I have property in High Chris, a bunch of over here.
Well, you can get clarification, but this could.
We told other things off in the triangle that's up here too. They add a watershed and it's not, it's actually built. So some of this needs to be done by the state.
Is, does this little point belong to this property?
Yes.
Oh, it does. Okay, so then my line is wrong. Okay.
Out of the watershed for two acres to build on.
Okay, so you do have frontage on Bemis Road that's not in the protection.
That is correct.
Do you know what the frontage is up there?
I do not.
I mean, not you, but the, the lot has. Yeah. Okay, so it's a separate lot, but it's being sold as part parcel with this. All right. And so just for the benefit of the public here, you can show this to the camera. A watershed preservation restriction, which is this orange, the light orange, is a legal agreement between DCR and a private landowner where the landowner sells or donates the development rights of their property to DCR for water supply protection purposes while keeping ownership of the land. And it remains in effect permanently and carries forward in perpetuity. And so what looks like a lot of land you can, that you're buying is actually maybe something in the order of 90 acres.
It's about a third that's available.
About a third, now how, maybe 100 acres. Okay.
61.
Okay, and your understanding that this is the same? Okay, all right. So having heard that, tell us what your, I think there was also.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair. I know that there's, there's people who are on the video and trying to view this here. I know that you have been showing this here to members of the audience who are present there. Would you kindly present this here to the video? Thank you.
Oh, she's gonna share a screen. She's got a better one. So the air is the little white box in the corner on Bemis Road is part of the property. Also though, members, this, we did get an email from you folks early on, which is in the documents, but I ran off another page because it had, was a chain of email and it was just easier to locate. So it says, you can present it, maybe you can present it with your plan, but their plan is an event venue to invest five to seven million in dwellings. Please note the dwellings resemble a New England farm. Summary of the work is build a house. You want to walk us through these, the bullet points on this? All right, you do that instead. Yes, you may have my.
You got an extra, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay.
So one of the things we did, we still have a special permit. I don't know if you want that.
Um. I think, I think, present your project. Yeah, it would be. You actually file it with her and there's B and there's a process and so I'd rather not take it tonight. We're not gonna make.
Yeah, I understand.
So bring your model a little bit towards the middle. Maybe you can name the camera towards it so Francois can see it.
Yeah, it looks like your camera is.
Or my camera can, can it pick it up?
It's picking it up, yeah.
Okay.
When you're ready.
Go ahead.
Essentially to the left or to your right would be where the railroad tracks are, where you guys sit in this loose pond up here is toward Venus Road. Essentially, just anchored out the area of actually the, the interest of where the bill would be. So the road being here with the trees left cleaned up.
This is which road?
George Howard.
George Howard.
Okay. So coming in.
So right here is the existing barn with the courtyard. Okay, the house is over here. That's existing. Coming up the road, what we plan to do is where the existing house burnt down and the foundation is, we do all that, put downstairs about seven, eight thousand square feet. And then the barn area across the street potential park in this area to do the barn, pretty much L shapes. When people come up, they see this part as a new barn and understand it's more, this part being between 25,000 to 30,000 square feet of event center, including basement for whatever needed on, storage of product or table, whatever that is. Plus also keeping three-car garage, lot more is whatever else is needed for that. So with this, also approaching the town in later years is potentially make a private road to keep it out of your hands. We'll maintain it. We'll pay the, put that, that's later on as we get going. So pretty much that's also looking for a 40-weekend type venue with the rest of the time off for whatever's needed, update, Christmas, call the events together for that, so forth. So based on that, that's pretty much our plan verbally. I don't know if any bullet points I can answer to, to provide more information or any questions that you have, but we put the model together because you can see what it is. And so again, it's not the whole area. It's just a piece of what we're talking about. And that area according to this map would be up on the top of the hill. That would be right on top of the hill, exactly. Right up here. Yeah.
But that's in the.
But in the research we did, it's not. That's why as discussion with you, like the white area, we claim as the other maps we've seen does fall in the area where you can do this on the 61C. And that, that.
So you don't think.
That we feel is wrong.
You feel that this isn't restricted?
Where this area is, that is correct.
Which is.
Which is about where the bend is, right there. Actually, that's just, where you're talking is just, well, the old houses. Well, the house in here, this was a house. That was the original house that burnt down about 30 years ago. Yeah, exactly. So. The foundation, everything is still there. Yeah, so how can that fall in the watershed when it's still there? It's, that, that wouldn't, that wouldn't make sense, right? So there's other maps and other things that we have seen from the Yes.
DCR area.
So.
But DC, I think that the planning board can't approve anything, whatever it is, if it's in a DCR without seeing where that boundary is. So somebody, and I honestly think it shouldn't be the seller, they shouldn't have put this on the market before getting the determination from DCR where those boundaries are, but I'm gonna defer on that to Bill.
So would it just be an advisory hearing from DCR they would need to do?
How, how do you, they're, they're claiming that this map is wrong. Okay, which is, this map is from the Watershed Protection Act Viewer map.
Yep.
So a lot of it is, what they're proposing to build would be on this watershed protection land is shown on this map.
So Alice, with your permission.
Hang on, I want to get the, the petitioner to listen to, listen to Bill for a second.
Okay. There's a plan on file at the Registry of Deeds that has meets and bounds that describes what is within the DCR watershed preservation restriction area and what is not. So there's a survey plan on file stamped by a surveyor. Your, the Fishers actually included that in their application. So it would not be hard for any registered professional to go out there and stake those lines and figure out where this is.
Okay.
Okay. Could that have changed since the old house had burnt down years ago and then maybe?
It was, I'll have to look, but I think it was dated in the, the 90s.
Okay, I do see their map and I did look at this. Did you see their map? This one from the, I mean, this is now a public record because it's been submitted. But to just give you an idea, we have the next people up because we're listening to them as well.
Yeah, here's, in the black would be the, would be the end of where George Howard is by the three-car garage that, you know, shows it in the.
We probably shouldn't, the planning board actually walk the sand, but I can't imagine how much force that would be.
It's a big area.
I don't know. You know, the trouble is that this, this doesn't show the boundaries clearly. It does show the watershed. So I guess we're gonna, I guess they're gonna have to pull that out of the registry. You didn't happen to bring a clearer copy of this by chance?
No, that was the.
Okay.
Yeah, we found some things on the net. Right. Didn't fit and some did. Like I said, they had the point where the house, the two-acre house was on the watershed. And then other maps and when we looked, it's not, so. Could they have changed these boundaries after the house burnt down?
I have no idea. I think.
Mallory, I have the map on my screen if you want to share a screen.
The last recording of anything we can find is one of the watershed. I believe Bill Murray just said it was 1990.
Bill just, you want to share it? Try it or we can try it.
I, I don't have permission.
Yeah, I'm making your host. Hold on one second.
But I believe all this has to be determined before anything would be approved here, direct to ours.
But I, the thing that concerns me and it concerns both of these projects is you still have to have, for us to approve it, it has to be allowed. Go ahead, Bill, can, has a floor for a second. He's working on it.
Can you see it?
Yeah, we got it right here.
Thanks, Bill. It's visible now.
So the railroad tracks are at the bottom. There's the house, there's the barns, there's the old.
We also have Sally, the realtor, just commented. She's switching to another computer at work so she can explain. Um, we also have a Sally, the realtor, just commented, she's switching to another computer with voice so she can explain.
This is on file at the registry of deeds.
Well, I mean, if there is a recorded plan, then that settles the issue where it is.
Exactly.
Okay, oh, so my understanding is, and Bill can correct us if I'm wrong, that aside from just farming, you can't really do anything on the watershed protection. It's subject to the water, the uh, restriction. Is that right?
There are some other things that they can do, but that's pretty close to accurate. They can do forestry, they can do uh, some other things.
But you can't put your septic system on it, you can't put roads through it.
Correct.
Right, alright.
So, so access to Bemis Road would be iffy. Plus, plus the fact that the actual road, George Howard to Bemis, is not passable except if you had a bulldozer.
So the access to this lot would be through George Howard?
And that is it. That, that's where they gain their legal frontage. But it is a dead end road for all, all realistic purposes.
Okay, so here's my question.
Bill, can you just give me the host capability back, please?
Yep.
That realty agent wants to speak.
Hold on.
Thank you, Bill.
I'll recognize her, what's her name?
Sally Man.
Sally Man? Okay, Sally Man, are you there?
No, wait, I'm still going to be hosting.
It's our internet.
It's not our internet.
I don't really want too many people here either because there is, there is a risk with COVID stuff, so. She's, she's.
Alright, she should be able to speak now.
And I, and I have a question for Bill too, but we'll let Sally speak first. Sally?
There's no other name she would sign on and under, correct?
You want to fiddle with it and I want to ask Bill a question. While, while she's trying to get Sally, Bill, a question for you. Actually, I don't mind other people weighing in on it either, but if the access, I'm just trying to understand the land, I mean, that's the first issue. So if George Howard rode on this, does it, you say it does not go through to Bemis, or it does go through to Bemis?
Hard path goes through, but it's not passable.
Okay.
It, it has not been maintained as a road.
Is it considered a public road to a certain point?
I don't know the answer to that question. I think whoever makes an application is gonna need to answer that question.
I believe the road where the asphalt ends is where, years ago, that's, that's where the town road stopped.
Okay, so.
There's also, there's also my understanding, there's a gate at the very top of the hill that basically precludes the road from continuing at this point in time.
Just past the old house.
Okay, so I just want to make people aware, we do have a dead end road limit. And I don't know how that's gonna play into this, but you actually have frontage on the road, right? So presumably it would be.
Yeah, the pre-existing, uh, pre-existing frontage lots on a public way. But it is a dead end road for all intents and purposes, and I don't know that DCR would allow somebody to improve the roadway other than the municipality, but again, that would be applicant's burden, not ours.
Alright, but if it's an accepted road, they can go, even though it's a dead end road, they can
Yes.
for subdivision purposes or to run a road off it up to five hundred feet, right?
That would be your call. A, a dead end off of a dead end is usually not allowed. And the reason for that is public safety. The fire department only carries X amount of hose. And if you've got a, you know, two thousand foot road and then you've got a five hundred foot cul-de-sac off of that, they might not be able to fight a fire if there's an accident on the principal road.
Okay, so following on, the next question is, this lot then would not be subdividable. You could put a driveway in, but you couldn't subdivide it.
I, I don't think I want to answer that in a public meeting.
Okay.
We have the real estate.
Okay.
Alice.
It's, I raised the question, things that concern the planning board. I'm gonna let.
We have Sally Man on the.
Sally Man. Hello, she's a realtor, who knows this land a little bit. What would, what light can you shed on this subject?
So as you drive, as you, as you cross over the railroad track and to continue on George Howard, there is a few thousand feet of road frontage on both sides of George Howard that brings you right to the top of the hill where the old house used to be. Um, and that was always considered a town road right actually past the top of the house, but at least to the top of the house. Um, as you drive up George Howard, all of the land on the right hand side of the road, there's a hundred acres in total that has no restrictions on it except for being in chapter sixty-one A. So as you drive up the whole left hand side of the, uh, excuse me, the right hand side of the road, as you get to the top of the hill and um, as you go past the top of the hill, there is uh, the, the property boundary is actually on the uh, as you're continuing north, it's going to be the kind of the field, the field line where the, the open field separates from woods, which I know is hard to see on the plan that was shared on the screen. Um, but all the open fields on the top of that hill are not restrictive. Um, so as far as with the watershed, any building on that hundred acres um, shouldn't have to involve any permission with the watershed. The watershed land is all the woodlands. Um, the only thing that it does do is at the, the point on the top of the hill where the fields end and the woods begin, there is an old road that was like a cart road at this point that brings you out to Bemis Road. That particular section of the road is under the watershed. And as my, as, as I understand it, you, it would not be able to be um, you know, you couldn't create a road going right through to Bemis because of that.
But Sally, this is Nicole speaking, where the foundation, just to clarify what you're saying, the foundation of where the old house was is outside of the watershed.
Correct. The, the foundation is in the non-restrictive land, in all the fields on top are all non-restrictive land.
This map's actually correct.
Right. Exactly.
Okay, so you think this is more or less correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Alright, okay. Thank you, Sally.
You're very welcome.
Okay, so now the question to you is um, sort of what? We don't, we don't have a, like an event, we don't have, but you know, we don't have a um, accessory use farm by law. Yet. And you had said, you had mentioned in the email or to me that in the brief minutes we sat here, that you were interested in proposing one um, for our consideration. And you also mentioned, which I think the rest of the board needs to know, that he, he has a business that involves hay, right? So do you want to describe where that would take place on this property?
Fields. We're, yeah, we, we've now signed a contract that we have to supply certain grains and hays to certain bacon, large bacon corporations throughout New England, so the top of what this particular land offers and others we're looking at provides the fields that are workable and farmable that would help supply that product that we need to do.
And now are any of those in this watershed protection area?
No.
No, okay. There's, what would you say of a hundred acres would involve farm?
We're all pretty much the white ism, what, what essentially is farm now?
Those in the existing.
The existing field.
I know, I used to forget my hay there.
Yeah, yeah.
So the, where your weather's on the left hand side of George Howard coming up here, isn't that a bigger area than what you're showing here? Well, that's actually DCRs.
Yeah.
This is DCR, all this is.
Where the white is to the left of George Howard were coming up on the left, I believe that's a much larger area.
Question the map because.
It's all hayfield.
It's all hayfield.
Sally just said this is about a hundred acres. So out of the hundred acres, maybe a different way would be to ask the reverse question. This development that you're proposing, how many acres of a hundred would it involve and how much would be farmed?
I would say around the house area, maybe two, and where the barn areas would be one, one and a half. And that's gonna be, or whatever's needed, different acres to, to build.
You also can't find where the barn is going to be. There was another structure there at some point.
Yeah.
Okay, but then you need parking on top of that and so on, so you're thinking maybe, maybe five acres out of the.
Yeah.
And then you farm the rest.
Yeah. So the farm would be under, what is the agriculture that the watershed allows you to do for any park, but as we saw with those other maps, those don't fall into that anyways. And if they did, they're still farmable because in the watershed, you still farm it, you just can't change it.
Okay. Okay, that's what's my understanding, you could farm it.
Right.
But can you clear it to farm it? No.
Only, only if it goes to the boundary that grew it.
It was originally the field, so a second growth, not too big.
So there are areas that.
I, 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 I really think that we need, we need Bill's opinion on this here because I also agree with him that there, that there's, that that's not the case here. Based on the restrictions that were imposed by the, uh, by the, by the granting of the line, of this land to the protection. Correct, Bill?
Yes, um, the DCR allows, as, as we know from our marijuana friends, uh, the DCR allows you to convert forest land to farmland under the watershed restriction and watershed regulations. So, it does, it does allow them to clear cut to a degree and, and convert forests to farmland uh, with certain restrictions regulated by the DCR.
Okay, so you know, obviously, we're talking concepts here. They're talking concepts too, it wasn't it, it wasn't the detail, the granular detail that you need to pass up to special permit, which would start with that plan and have everything mapped out, but you, you know, this, this, they, they actually have submitted a um, special permit to us um, in which they, their project, they're calling a country club and that's an issue we need to address tonight. But you have some of those same issues about what, what, if you're going to try to address it um, as, as, keep it as one lot. I guess the problem I have is I hadn't foreseen the farm use by law, which seems like in some ways a good fit. I hadn't seen it including these extra houses. I mean, I can see why you could maybe rebuild one, but generally it's one house per lot, so it would involve some subdivision. I'm not sure how you would do that.
Lots are pretty specific.
Are very, pretty specific on that. We do have a um, what would you call it? Uh, what, what do we call it? The cluster, open space development by law, which would allow you, it doesn't allow you to put more units on any given tract of land, but it does allow you to cost to them. So you might want to take a look at that.
Okay.
Uh, but other than that, that's where I see, you know, we haven't developed this by law yet, but we hadn't contemplated it as involving subdivision. We do have a subdivision law that says one house, one lot, so it would be like an accessory use. So where, anybody can present a bylaw to us for consideration, you don't, you can even present it to town meeting for consideration and just for our read on it, you know? But I mean, this, we are where we are.
Yeah.
It's on, on this project. We want to save time to talk to them, so if any last questions and then I'm gonna move to the next.
Yeah, just going forward, I mean, notwithstanding we're just supply it a bit anyways, uh, because of the farm necessity and agricultural necessity. So with the two things that are going on here, the point inside is the supplying of the product of what's grown there to a contract we signed to. And then on top of that is, this is the second proposal, what we could do, potentially do up there. Uh, so essentially, we go out firsthand is supply that contract and still go forth with that, notwithstanding. And then plan on this as a secondary.
Right, and we do plan to get to this by law, but I, and I'm not saying we, we would be, wouldn't allow other buildings and stuff, but you know, we were thinking of, it's supposed to be a farm use by law, it's supposed to be a, uh, you know, it's an accessory. And he, and I don't know, that's, I think it's kind of unfair to say, like Rottlin does, well, you gotta have seventy-five percent of your money from the farm operation. I probably wouldn't, probably not the best way to make it money. It's probably better to make it percent of revenue or, but I don't know, but we haven't figured it out. But anyway, that's where we are and we don't dislike your presentation, we like your presentation, but um, our hands are pretty tied in terms of what we can actually do right now.
Right.
And I assume if you were gonna clear land to farm it, clear more land to farm it, you'd really have to take that up with DCR and get them to agree to it.
Correct.
So you got a couple levels of.
Yeah, even the point of what's growing and bringing them and showing that where the lines are in the stone wall and the guards that's bringing that back to bring the field back to get the more, most revenue out of the field that's there. Um, because it is growing to the field.
But that's.
Secondary growth uh, coming into the fields that are.
But that's their jurisdiction, right? I mean, you can farm it, you don't need permission from the planning board to farm it, so.
It, and just one other thing, uh, with this or sectioning out land regarding this or any other properties in town, up at Bemis Road, someone did get to two acres to put a put a lot up there, so whatever process that took, they got it done, right? Uh, and then they put it in watershed around that, so uh, it's been done. That, that's an example of precedent set with regards to potential, this comes further to be able to use that as the two acre lot of Bemis Road.
Yeah, you could, you could do, you could do a subdivision of it if you can figure it out, if the dead end roads and all the rest of it.
Right, well, that's up there, but.
But I'm saying, but I don't think you can just build two houses on the existing lot like you're planning. You'd have to come up with some configuration for boundaries or closure. Well, you say in your.
The goal, one was burnt down, so it was the, and then the other is still standing.
So they're rebuilt.
Yes.
Okay, well then you gotta talk to the building inspector whether he's gonna allow you to rebuild both of them.
No, they, Alice, they uh, they lost their protections that there's a I think it's a three year timeline when you, a, a property is destroyed by fire or other, they have a timeline in which to rebuild it and that's long since expired. There's no grandfathering for that structure.
Okay, so you're probably gonna get denied because it's been beyond the three years and then you're got, you're back to the problem of we, we're kind of a one, one house per lot. Doesn't mean you can't create another lot, but you do have those issues with George Howard Road and dead ends and how you're gonna do that. Alright, so I've given you some guidance. I don't want to, I don't want to take off all night because we've got other things on our agenda.
Alice, you have a question from the panel, as I said, when, when an accessory by law goes to town, town vote, not yet.
It has to be at a town meeting and it probably won't be ready for this spring unless we're gonna really, I don't know. The, so, there's a process that goes through before it gets to town meeting. It has to be a series of hearings, it has to be drafted, none of that has yet begun despite.
You have time, there's time.
We do have time.
Discuss, but it's gonna move.
But it's gotta move, right? So it's possible it would be on the meeting for spring.
And then you have another person that says, I'm sorry, unable to speak, but I'm wondering why with all that frontage and acreage of non-restricted land, a lot can't be subdivided.
Probably can be, but there is the dead end road issues. So.
Yeah, I understand. Again, this, like I said.
But if it's a town road.
Yeah.
Yeah, but can you build dead end roads off a dead end road? That's the.
Well, we're not looking to further the road, that wasn't any of the plan at all.
So then, then if it's an, if it's an existing town road, even if it's a dead end, you could create an A and R, some sort of rounded or open space, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Alright.
I wanna, I wanna wrap it up and I want to go to, give our other presenter a chance here tonight. Thank you.
Oh, they heard ours, you wanna hear that?
Oh, okay.
Oh, you're welcome to stay. Okay, so, Allison Muirhead and.
That was Alice.
I'm sorry, Nicole, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong tag, I didn't know that. Nicole Heinhardt Thompson, sitting in front of me, right? And I've forgotten your name.
Right.
Okay. They have, um, they were here before our meeting was canceled a couple meetings ago and were asked us, and of course, we couldn't make, we, we didn't, they were just presenting in um, sort of open session. Their idea for using this property as a country club. And so they submitted an application that's in your documents for um, special permit for a country club. A country club is an allowed use in an undefined term. And their proposal, I did send off to Bill, who was here, who you've talked to, and he's gotten his letter and it says, I think, not surprisingly, that even though they included a fair amount in it, it's nowhere near the detail you need for a special permit, nowhere near those drawings, but um, so there were two. Um, so there were two, when we didn't have this meeting, I sort of made a decision as chair to send this off to Bill to at least take a look at it. And I also sent off a, um. Head. Uh, to, to, uh, town administrator. To ask town council for an opinion and guidance on what Massachusetts law says, if anything, about what's country club. And I didn't get the answer back from them. He did send a letter, but it was fairly, you know, town council, why not? They need a little time to work and they probably didn't have sufficient time.
We asked for a lawyer too for definitions, just in case town council didn't get back in time, so.
They did put definitions in their law and I'm, I'm thinking, first of all, Bill can weigh in on this. But I'm thinking if you. If you want, and that is up to the board too. I mean, do you wanna wait for town council's opinion? Do you wanna vote on whether we would consider what she is, we should run through again, the def, reading through what she's proposing. Whether that fits within the definition, we would accept it as such. Yeah, um. Because I don't think, one thing I don't think is fair is if we're not gonna allow this to go. It's not fair to expect her to invest, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand in plans for something we're not gonna let go.
Right.
Me agreeing.
Uh, so. I don't know how you wanna handle this tonight. There's space, because I'll read it for the sake of the. The, the, uh. The record, right, in the audience, it's out there. They say, our dream is to create a space that can be utilized predominantly by local and state vendors as a way to come together to collaborate on projects such as. Wedding, inspiration, photography, floral installations, and also utilize. Uh, utilized on the site as a function space and community center for corporate events, private events, weddings, et cetera. Uh, we plan to build a single story building with a capacity for two hundred and fifty people that emulates. A connection with the surrounding landscape in this secluded property and it's under ninety minutes from Boston. Okay, so then they say, they looked at our by law, um. And it does list, country club is an allowed use with a special permit in the, in the agricultural zone, which I don't think we dispute at all. Um, and they say that it should be. Oh, let's see if I can fast forward here. Says, okay, in our own research, we have determined that the common use definition of country clubs stated in dictionaries is often described as a club. With social facilities set in the suburban area. This fits our use for what they're gonna call the Will Hill Country Club. As it is absolutely to be a social facility and being set in a residential agricultural setting. Situated directly in the suburban area. Um, and then they say they've researched beyond it, beyond just the dictionary definition. To review actual existing country clubs that determine a common theme, membership fees in the way they said. The vision for their membership fee would be. To craft a membership program for a vendor, so vendors would be the members. They will, would each pay twenty dollars a month to be part of the Will Hill Membership Program. And with that, they would be granted the ability to use the space for functions, inspirations, showcases, installations, et cetera. So, anything you wanna add to that?
Yeah, so, um, in receiving your email about going to town council for a Massachusetts definition of country club. We were unsure of how quickly town council could get back, so we went to our lawyer who has helped us in the past with very similar. Um, situations and he says there is no Massachusetts. Technical definition for country club and in that case, then you utilize either a dictionary definition or a common use definition, which is what I outlined in the application. So that's what our Massachusetts lawyer said, of course, town council, I'm sure to you is who you defer to. But just as an added piece, I wanted to make sure that you were aware.
International Building Code and Mass State Building Code also don't define it.
Right.
Okay, there are other zoning bylaws that do, that I looked at, um. Which, if anybody's interested, I can read Princeton, which is one of our benchmark towns. Said, uh, defines in their bylaws, club or lodge. They, they don't have country clubs. They define club or lodge, private.
Right.
Uh, building structures and premises used by nonprofit, social or civic organization. Or by an organization catering exclusive to members and their guests for social civic recreation or athletic purposes. Which are not conducted primarily for games. And provided there are no vending stands, merchandising or commercial activities except as may be required generally for the membership. And purposes of such organizations. Uh, Sterling has a commercial recreation and sports facility instead of country club. Which they defined as golf course, driving range, bathing beach, sports club, horseback riding, riding stable, boathouse, game preserve. Marina or other commercial recreation carried on in hall or in park outdoors. Except those activities more specifically designated in the by law. This definition is intended to ex, to include facilities designed primarily for participatory recreation by the general public and or its members. But to exclude facilities which derive a significant portion of their income from entrance fees paid by spectators.
Right.
Um, and then law in the Law Insider, which is a website that congregates definitions. Describes it or has a definition that's country club means building and facilities owned and operated by a corporation or association of persons for social or. And recreational purposes, but not operated for a profit. The affairs and management of such club are conducted by board of directors, executive committee or similar body chosen by the members. Merriam Webster, country club noun, definition, a country club, a suburban club for social life and recreation. Especially one having a golf course. And dictionary dot com, a club usually in a suburban district with a clubhouse and grounds offering various social activities. And generally having facilities for tennis, golf, swimming, et cetera. So, I'm not saying that's the last word, it's just a sampling of some of the definitions.
And there are many, I mean, if you Google country clubs just in Massachusetts, there is a wide range of. What they can be defined as, which is why we wanted to give our business proposal very clearly stated so that it. We could show you how it fit within the current bylaws of the town itself.
Okay, so, okay, I understand. So what, would you like us to vote without the benefit of town council's opinion?
I think what would be really, I think what would be really helpful is if you were comfortable with, um, voting whether it def, it. Could be defined as a country club that would benefit us greatly in being able to move forward with. Getting, you know, of course, we knew that the, the application wasn't in as much detail as we needed it to be, but as you have so clearly stated. Those financial steps are large if we don't know if the definition is actually going to be approved or not. We find that if the definition is approved. For what we are defining it as a country club, then the following steps are. More of, uh, uh, yeah, paperwork and ne- necessity in order to continue with the process.
Okay, so, okay, I understand that. We have, but I don't know what our board wants.
We have a panelist or who's Rob, he stated, how could they be considered a country club if the principal uses a wedding venue, just for the record.
I think that's what your chair you work out. Um, does everybody on the board understand what they're proposing here? Did you get a chance to look at it and could you see it?
If you wanna give her a chance to answer, absolutely, go ahead.
Um.
You can walk us through this if you want.
Sure, I don't think that necessarily the primary use would be the venue as wedding. If we, uh, that was one of the things that we mentioned. We also want it to be a place for people to come to. As I, uh, in the first couple of things I mentioned, which was, you know, like photography, inspiration, art galleries, et cetera. With also being a private function space in addition. So people who are paying their membership fees would get access to the building. That would be the primary use as the membership fee. And then, in addition to that, if people wanted to rent it out to be able to hold a function, they could as well be, given that it's a social function space.
But your members are the vendors.
Yes.
Okay, so. Um, I don't know, what do you, I mean, this is not my decision. Do you wanna take a vote on this? Do you wanna wait for town council? What do you?
Well, I feel like we need a better foundation on it, um, because I, I share a similar question to, to what the, uh. The person in the virtual meeting had raised. Just to be clear, I, I would love to see the parcel go to either one of these uses. Uh, I think it would be good for the town. I think it would be good for everybody. But we have an ultimate question of legal authority and. Uh, I spent some time looking into this because I knew this was gonna be an issue that came up and. We have a, we have a bylaw that prohibits all non-enumerated uses. Um, and when you look at the state statute, it's pretty clear that we're supposed to follow the specific guidelines of our local zoning bylaws. Uh, when granting a special permit, uh, chapter forty A, section. Somewhere that I lost on my computer, but it, it's in chapter forty A. So I. I, it is forty A, section nine, uh, talking about the, um. Subject to general specific provisions set forth, uh, within the bylaws. And that's a specific provision saying all other uses are prohibited and. That's something that went to town meeting and voted on by two thirds of people. So I think we need to be in a place where we can feel comfortable that we're, we're following within the definition. And I'm not saying that it's not. And it, it could simply be a matter of explaining what you're doing more.
Sure.
I think the issue. Uh, and specifically explaining and writing or amending the application, uh, along with, um. A basis for it. Cause like when, when I went through and I looked at the documents and, and I looked, well, country club defined is this. Well, there's no citation to the definition that was being referenced. Yeah, it's a definition, but a definition from who? Oxford?
Yes, for Oxford.
Um, because Merriam Webster, uh, cites a, a country club as being a suburban club for social life and recreation. And just thinking from anecdotal personal experience, uh, a country club usually has some kind of recreation.
And we have considered that as well, that, you know, again, it's really challenging when you're. Looking at a bylaw that has literally no definition for country clubs, so we're kind of trying to play with it as much as we can. If the town felt that in order for it to fit a specific definition, it needed to have recreation. We've already considered that the recreation that we would offer would be horseback riding. And we've already, their barns already existing, they're already there. It's very capable to have that piece of it. You know, we have the fields, we have the trails, it's available. So if that was an important piece to the town and to the board, that in order for it to clearly fit within. The definition that we essentially are creating, that is a piece that we would absolutely add in to be able to make it fit even more.
I, I think what I would respond to that is we, we need to have a better, at least I, I as a board member, need to have a better idea of what the definition. We should apply is, and there were some examples that, uh, that the chair gave us tonight. And I don't think any of them are completely on point.
Right.
Um, and, and I don't know, I guess actually the most persuasive thing that, that I could look at would be. A list of other places in Massachusetts where essentially the same thing is done and people call it a country club. Because that, that's the simplest way. That, that's just passing the duck test.
Right.
So I, I, that would be persuasive. Uh, finding a definition in any kind of building guide or. Anything shows up. A little bit better, I. We have our authority to do this because I think this is gonna be something that turns into a relatively high profile project in the town. And if we don't start from a good foundation, that's gonna be trouble along the way, so.
I also wanna have an opinion from town council.
You do, okay.
I do, just to cover everybody, no matter what we're doing as we go forward, I, I agree with Chris. We need to have a good foundation and do that. If we have all the information we can get before we move forward, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Well. I, I sent it to them. I sent your proposal.
Yes, I know.
You know, I think I, I tried to be very open about it.
No, you are, you are.
But I do think that, um, I mean, just speaking personally, while we're just tossing it around. To me, I, I think the two hurdles are, is, is members, are members vendors, then it becomes a commercial operation. It's more of a, um. A, a facility, a, a event facility, right? It's as opposed to a country club where you really think of members as individual members. So I, it's.
Well, they could be. I mean, you know, it, it could be like, I think about all the local businesses and. Local people that may want to be able to utilize this, like, what if you have somebody who, a local school or local family that wants to be able to present? Like artwork or photography or something in their, in a bigger gallery than what's available. They could. By paying their membership free, have access to the facility and be able to utilize it. So it's not just.
The, the way that generally works is, I'm thinking of like a million years ago, I'm coming up on my fiftieth wedding, anniversary, right, is. You have the country club that hosts the wedding, which, which is goes, has gone back fifty years, right? But that tied in membership is, um. You know, and other people could come in through, like, the family membership, right? But it was still sort of an individual enterprise and then we also had use of the pool and the golf course and, and I think that's very traditional and I think. When you look at this, hundreds of country club venues for weddings, but almost all of them are affiliated with the outdoor. Activity and individual memberships, right? So I haven't done town council's work, that's why I gave it to them, but that theme does run through it. And I think that, um. You know, I think it's a pretty high hurdle to say the only members are gonna be vendors. And you're not gonna have any outdoor.
Well, that, and that's, that's exactly why I had said before that, you know, if that piece was felt to be an important component of the country club def, definition. Then that is a piece we've already considered and already thought about how we would weave it in and that again could, would be included in the membership.
Well, if you wanna revise your proposal and come back, or you wanna just sit on it and hear what town council has to say, I'll probably have a. At the first meeting of next year, I'll certainly have a decision, but it won't be town council kind of waffles, you know? So, it'll be guidance, right? So, I mean, I don't mean waffling, but I'll say, they don't wanna make the decision. They don't wanna be the planning board. So they're just gonna spell out some things to be considered. So if you wanna wait for that, let's hold up on our vote. Let's not prejudice it. And, um, come back, get on the agenda again.
Sure.
And when I get it from town council, I'll send it to your husband Mallory, send it to.
Yeah, that's fine.
This Francois have mess, uh, or, or Bill, if either one of them wants to weigh in.
At this point in time, I would also suggest that we, uh, get the, uh, town council feedback. I would greatly appreciate it. I see Bill has his right, hands raised.
Okay, good.
I just wanna mention that I do think you should take a vote to reject the application because you don't want to imply that you're starting a timeline. For deliberation.
Okay. The permit, we can, we can, we cannot accept.
Yes.
The, uh, it's, we can, um, not accept it as a complete special permit application, right?
Yeah.
So the timeline does not start.
Yeah.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we not accept the special permit because it's incomplete?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, Livedo, yes?
Steiger, yes.
Lily Arias. Holman, yes.
Okay. It hasn't been rejected, but it hasn't been accepted. It's gotta be.
We knew that going in.
Okay. This way?
If we didn't have a forum. That's when she can vote.
Okay, just, just checking.
Yeah, as long as she attends all the meetings.
No, this isn't, this isn't a special permit though.
Yeah.
This is an administrative matter. You simply need a majority.
Okay, thanks, Bill. All right, folks, um, wish we had better answers for you, but that's where we are, where we are. So, and we have other things we have to get to, so thanks very much. And I've lost my agenda.
Thank you. Good to see you again.
Thank you.
It's all yours.
Okay, we need to move along. We need the next thing. Fortunately, they are not coming tonight, which is Alan Crane, which is twenty-six, uh, Worcester Road.
Hold on one second, Alice. Next town meeting would be in June, correct? Or is it May?
It's June, it's June, early June.
Early June. Oh, no, we just had a question.
Oh.
Uh, I thought you were.
Oh, no, all right.
Thanks for coming. Okay, so the, um, Alan Crane, they had Mallory reach out to them. Remember Alan Crane, twenty-six, uh, Worcester Road, the clay pit? Mary and a Pinto, or they wanna. Are you a clay pit is not a gravel pit and they don't have to do this?
Right.
Um, and so it's been sort of bumped along. We never did go and take a sidewalk, which I kinda feel bad about, which you maybe wanna do. But the bottom line was, they said what?
He has engineers working on it and they're not ready yet.
Okay, you know, I sent him a fairly lengthy letter back saying, we need, these are the slopes and these are the. So he gets the point that he's gotta pass something that'll pass the, give us a way to amend it.
Okay.
If he wants to preserve it. So they're not coming tonight. The battery energy storage by law, geez, you've been cooking this, kicking this one around for a long time. Francois there?
Yeah.
Um. So. Bill sent an estimate way, way back. In February of twenty twenty-one. Right, and Bill, it hasn't been updated. That's the one, right?
I might have, I might have, uh, not updated the date. The, the estimate was November.
November, okay, but. I'm just wanna make sure that we're looking at the right one. He sent us, he said, the, the review of the battery energy storage by law. Is more involved than review of a general by law because he has to have the electrical engineer component, check it with the codes and. Um, and the best technology guidance, so. He was, he put together an estimate, it's all written out here. It is basically, um, thirty-four fifty. He was, he put together an estimate. It's all written out here. It is basically um thirty four fifty without any. Time in it for meetings, which we're gonna, then it's four hundred dollars. Basically per meeting. Is it right, Bill?
Correct.
I don't know who. Um. I don't know how many meetings. That's just a meeting with you. And could you then, would you be able to convey Shepherd's? Part of it. So we don't have to pay both of you, or would he have to come too?
Uh, depends on how detailed your questions are.
Okay. Well, what if we made it thirty nine hundred bucks? That puts in another. At least one meeting, right? And then you could. Okay, so. My worry about getting this done was I wanted to make sure and I it was just silly, but I I was thinking, you know, we had agreed. With the select board that we would set some money aside for the implementation chapter, but then they got a grant for that. So Mallory checked, we have eighty nine hundred dollars. That we can spend that's in our account unencumbered. So. Um, I don't think we need to ask the town to do a share here. I think we could actually fund this. Uh, I think we can do it for the thirty nine hundred. You think, Bill? Maybe?
I think so.
May I ask a quick question? And Bill, you have some history with regards to the solar bylaw. I'm just trying to uh assess the uh work that you did on the solar bylaw. Which I I understand is a different beast, but it is in some ways related. The amount of work that you did at that point in time, I'm assuming you were involved in that?
Uh, only for the uh administrative part, not the content.
Francois, we got the grant for the.
I know, no, I'm not. No, no, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the original, the original solar bylaw that was implemented. Uh, is is I'm just trying to understand, is this bigger than BritBox or smaller than BritBox or similar to the BritBox that we're talking about that we did for the solar bylaw? I know a lot of, go ahead.
This is a lot more precise. Um, the solar bylaw that the town adopted was based on. The general one developed by the state. And. My participation was simply to make sure that the processes. Uh, outline met the zoning, met zoning and state bylaws for process, not content.
And this B E S S uh bylaw that we have at this point in time really is modeled. Based on existing bylaws that we have from other towns as well as the New York one. So because of that, you're saying. Is 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 your is your statement therefore that this is significantly different?
It is a different animal, yes.
Gotcha. Okay, I I understand. I'm just trying to get a context and also make sure that we understand. Where where are you coming from when it, when you're assessing it as such? Thank you.
It's different.
No, and I appreciate, I appreciate this here. And so, Madam Chair, from my perspective, I know that I put a lot of effort into. Putting the in in the initial bylaw uh statements together. I mean, I've had inputs obviously from other members of the board. And I know that Bill is uh exceedingly good at the work that he does. Uh, I would at this point in time ask that the board recommend. That I I would like to recommend that the board that they favorably consider uh the proposal that was presented by. By by Mr. Murray uh from Places and Associates to do the assessment.
For thirty nine hundred dollars.
For the quantity that he has stated, obviously.
To make that a motion. Okay.
I I'm, that is a motion.
Okay, so Francois's made the motion, Bill's second it, but I have discussion points before we vote.
Okay.
So Bill, discussion point for you. We had talked about. Um, the way this bylaw is written from Francois is it's allowed anywhere in the commercial district. And then we talked about doing an overlay district instead. Um, and then, so this map appeared with where three phase power power connection is.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I just want to correct this here. It's not, not to do it instead, but do it with with the with the overlay district in as as a map that defines. Clearly where the where the B E S S, the the battery energy storage systems would could be located.
So it would be, it would have to be in both the commercial district and the overlay.
It would be in the commercial district with the overlay, with the overlay map indicating where within the commercial district this could be. These could be located. And there's and and just one, one fine point here, and that is is that within the commercial district. That we have, and that does not include town center, which obviously would be an area which I would be leery about. Uh, including and incorporating here. There are also understandably limitations as to where. At present time, such uh battery energy storage systems could be located primarily because. The infrastructure requirements that are that that have to go along with this here, namely the fact that there has to be three phase power lines uh available.
Right. But. So just this point of clarification, you can write it either way. You can write it, uh, the uses allowed in the overlay district. Or you can write it, the uses allowed in the overlay district and only the commercial district, so that if there's three phase power in a residential zone. And you think that it's appropriate for that, the overlay district can then. Trump the underlying zoning for this specific use. Or you can muddle it and 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 say. It it's allowed in a residential district, but only where the overlay exists. It's a lot of residential and commercial.
Yeah, so with the six hundred cutoff. For this bylaw, right? Because under that, under six hundred, whatever the unit is, it's allowed anywhere in town, right? That'll get your Tesla charged in the residential zone, right?
Correct.
So would there be any reason to allow? A bigger facility in the residential zone?
Can you ask the question again? I'm sorry, I could not hear you very well.
It, if. You know, if you're tier one.
Hmm.
It's excluded, it's allowed, it's not covered by this.
Hmm.
Well, I guess it is, it is covered by this, but it's not limited to the commercial zone, right?
Tier one is not, is is, tier one is pretty much uh exempt from a special permit and is therefore not. Not considered under this bylaw as 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 requiring a special permit. Yes.
Okay, and okay, and that's enough in six hundred. Kilowatt.
Kilowatt hours. Yes.
Okay, is enough to to pretty much. Fire up anything that a residential use would want, like the coming off electric vehicles.
Most, 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 most facilities at home at this point in time typically leverage systems that are two hundred kilowatt hours or less, as my factor or. Most of them are less than a hundred kilowatt. In the discussions that I've had with individuals, because of the fact that there's going to be more prevalent use of potential electric vehicles. And therefore requiring, say, for example, two, maybe even three chargers, plus maybe some individuals wanting to have backup. Backup uh power for their home, just in case, say, for example, instead of having an a a a a diesel generator, propane generator, gasoline generator. And having these facilities, we basically have up this up to these, the the threshold that we had indicated here, which is the six hundred kilowatt. Just still not considered to be a commercially feasible uh venture. And so.
For allowing the six hundred and. I'm I'm trying to.
It does not, it does not preclude the six, does not preclude the six hundred from being in a commercial area. If that's what you're, is that what, if that is what you're referring.
But you're over this over the. This three phase map.
Hmm.
Has way beyond commercial areas in it.
No, not, the the map does not. The map, the map is only restricted to areas which is which are commercial.
Oh, this isn't Hubbard's and it's all the commu- rounding surrounding towns.
Correct. And there was a small little area that we basically added, which had sort of a different type of color. Don't know how it came out in in your. In your particular uh uh printout. Uh, it's it's a, it's a fairly narrow sliver that is to the left and to the right on Route sixty eight. Uh, and really stops on uh on um. On High Street.
I was just thinking. I don't know. I, this map I have. This must have been done by Bill, right? The line goes down High Street?
Nope, that's, oh, no, the the very, very first line, the the one that has those blue lines.
It has light blue and dark blue.
Yeah, that's a different map. That is a map that comes from from National Grid. That basically provides a list of all, not a list, it's basically depiction of where the where three phase electricity. Flows throughout uh through throughout our town. And and it indicates as to where that three phase uh uh originates from, which is from a substation, I believe it is in Westminster. There's a separate map, which is the overlay map, which I handed over to Bill. And I think that, and and I know that I uploaded one up into the. Onto the SharePoint site. That is a lot, lot more restrictive, which is basically in the commercial zone. And indicates where within the commercial zone, therefore this would apply to.
Okay, so. Do we allow it only, would we allow it anywhere throughout the commercial zone and just make people aware of where the lines are at the moment? Or do we restrict it to an overlay zone, which is where the lines are at present in the commercial zone? That's my question.
Um, give me one second here. Uh, um, Mallory, uh, I I'm not sure if the um. And I apologize, I probably should have been better prepared for this year. But I was under the impression that for the very last meeting or maybe the prior meeting, the one we had in November. In early November. It's not there. I'm just trying, there there was a map that I had, I I had sent out. And that map was, one second.
You know what? It's it's unless we have to resolve it tonight, even though.
I I I can actually, I can show it if if I may uh present.
Okay.
Can I uh, can I share my screen? Thank you.
Is this something?
How?
Yeah, maybe, because it goes stuff.
Can I, can I, it says host disabled participating screen? Can I do it now?
Yes, as soon as you can.
Perfect. All right. So as you can see here.
Yep.
Right now, what I have in here basically shows all of the area. So this is the original map that we have from the town, which depicts in this sort of like. Orangey color, the commercial district, and then there's the town center.
I see.
There's a very narrow sliver here, which goes from here.
Yep.
To here.
Yep.
Where there, where there is phase three, there was there's three phase electricity. And therefore only in this, in the commercial, yes, because this is commercial.
Yeah.
On Route sixty eight, it is only within this sliver of land. Where there is three phase electricity and in the commercial, where the, at this point in time, the the battery energy storage systems. Uh, could be uh could be located. And that would be the overlay district.
Okay. Then, then I I prefer uh to restrict it to that. I just am thinking about getting it passed, you know, and we can always be expanded the area, and I think an overlay district would pass better.
It could be subsequently changed based on the availability of such infrastructure, but it also therefore would require that. Uh, rezoning would have to take place from a commercial perspective. But at this point in time, just basically take, think of, think of uh. You have to be commercial and you have to have three phase. And so therefore this is really the only affected area, okay? If that changes in the future, meaning I E. Number one is is you have three phase, which for all intents and purposes, this section up the top has three phase. But it's not commercial. If if commercial becomes available here, then yes, you could theoretically add it in that area.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to stop sharing. Any other questions on this map before I stop sharing?
Nope, that's good. Thank you. I get it. And it was not the map I was looking at, so I'm glad you did.
No, the other, the other, the other map was was just to indicate why, why we, why we chose that area. And it's based on. What what the public utility is providing us as information.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? That was my question. Other questions? So this is a vote to appropriate the thirty nine hundred dollars to have this draft prepared professionally to this bylaw to go forward.
I'll make that motion.
You, you, it's already.
I already made it.
Oh.
Okay, we're ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
We need to second the motion.
Bill seconded it.
Okay.
Voting, Francois?
Uh, hi.
Okay, lived all eye.
Winrow eye.
Holman's eye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Francois.
Thanks, everybody. Bill, don't go away. Just quite yet. The next, the next item is. The rate of development for dwelling units by law, which we. We did hear from actually the Attorney General's office today. That um it was approved for the one year extension, which is what we did, but it absolutely has to be on the town. We have to make the warrant or it will expire. So. I've put a lot of effort into trying to fix it. Now, I don't know, Bill, did I send you a copy of it yet?
You did, and I. Did I send a red line back? I think I did, late this afternoon.
Late this afternoon?
Yeah.
I was being bombarded by email late this afternoon.
Uh, let me see.
All right, well. Okay, so.
Yes, I did.
Was it heavily red lined?
No.
Okay, all right. So for for the public, we have a rate of development by law in this town. That um hasn't been really anything but kicked down the road for twenty years and it has some major problems in it. Um, so we just extended it one more year so we could deal with some of these problems. So I went through it. And I'm not trying to. I I kept many, many, many of the same limits in it, right? For example, um. Twenty eight dwelling units.
That's it, right?
But I tried to clarify that a dwelling unit, you know, if it's a duplex, there's two dwelling units, right? If it's a. I tried to really go through it and make it more readable. And so the main changes I made was. Um, to exclude all subsidized housing units. The way the old law read was it could be. Up to a quarter of the units in a development built by a. Limited liability corporation, which was the way you had to build S H I units. You had to form the special corporation. Bill, you can weigh in here. Now that's not true anymore. Regular developers can apply for grants and incorporate S H I units. Um, so I just thought it was a big roadblock and I think they shouldn't be included at all. I did talk to Bill about this in the cap. Because actually the state can, if you're, especially if you're down where we are, where you're supposed to have ten percent units and we only have three percent units. They can waive that restriction anyway. And they would, I think. So that was one. Um, I excluded um in-law and accessory apartments, which weren't excluded, although there was this. Term that to me is vague, but maybe it isn't, it was conversions, whatever conversion is. I made it clear and I'm hoping that. Actually, it won't be in-law and accessory, but it'll be just accessory. We're going to get to that by law too, but the fact that that wouldn't be counted in. That's a really important uh housing principle. Somebody wants to put a hu- an in-law on, you know? So I excluded those. I excluded construction of a new house on a site of a demolition should be excluded from the count. And the reason for that is there's a lot of old ratty houses in town that are falling down. And if somebody's willing to buy them, tear them down, put up a house, get rid of an eyesore. Seems to me they should be able to do it and not be kicked over till the next year. You may disagree with that, but uh that wasn't excluded. And then I excluded up to ten units building an open space residential development, which would probably be five buildings because you can build townhouses. Um, I just don't see. I mean, I don't, I don't like our open space residential development because it doesn't incorporate any affordable housing, which many of them do. Um, but anyway. Maybe I'll get pushed back on that. I don't think there was unit, there were units excluded. For Moosehorn. I don't know whether Moosehorn is an open space residential development or a standard subdivision.
It's a senior residential development.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
So we have two senior residential developments in town.
You do.
Moreland, Moreland and Moosehorn.
That's correct.
Okay, um, well, anyway, I mean, you can argue with it if you want. The automatic roll over of applicants waiting for a permit at the end of the year, I left in. Um, but the way it was. Is the person that got, that didn't make it on the list had to sort of reapply, had to notify, had. It was like you had to opt in again to stay on the list. And I think you. They should stay on the list automatically unless they withdraw it, right? So I tried to fix that because it just seemed unfair to me. And then, um. Uh, I, so senior residential developments were excluded anyway. They just were. It should remain because we have a really big senior housing problem in this town. I think, anyway. And then, um, they also had this provision. That on principle I disagree with. It said, the planning board can, based on a salient need, a finding a salient need. Just waive it for any ten units, whatever they are in town. And I kind of disagree with that because I think that. The planning board shouldn't be choosing the winners and the losers. And I think that it disadvantages the young developer that's coming in. Versus say, somebody like Ed Blanchard, who's got a big reputation. You know, he's going to do it right. You know, he's a good guy. So you're tempted to grant it. So. I don't know. If you want the escape hatch, then it ought to be more refined to what more than salient need, you know? If that's it, you know, it's. I don't know. But anyway, those are the base. I don't know, but anyway, those are the basic changes and I tried to make it more readable. So what I'm looking for at this point tonight is if you've read it. If you don't, if you have changes you want to make and I'll look at bills. Which I didn't get to see, but I would like to advertise a hearing on it, send it to the planning board, send it to the building inspector, have it. Yeah, select board, building inspector. I don't know, whoever else is involved.
I liked the changes.
Yeah, I thought they were all pretty reasonable.
Bill, you think we can do that? I'll take your, we can say with your changes and I'll integrate them.
Oh no, I mean, my, my changes are just comments, so whatever you've written, you, you're gonna hold a public hearing and. You're gonna take testimony and you're gonna modify it based on the testimony anyway.
Great, okay, fine. So a vote to schedule this for the public hearing and send it to the select board. Okay, is there a second?
I second the motion.
Hearing none? Francois, you wanna start?
Yes.
Okay, Livedal, yes?
Go home and just.
Monroe, yes.
Okay, can you, can you figure out the timelines and the publications and the hearing and see how soon we can get to it?
Probably would be January the third. Thursday is January twentieth.
Yeah, we got this set of holidays. Yeah, if you can make it. Yeah, January, okay. No, we have a January sixth meeting.
Yeah, but we are.
But their town offices are closed and. We're doing well to get it in January.
Madam Chair, what's our, what's our cutoff for the. For all of these bylaws to be in the hands eventually of. The select. The warrant.
Usually it's in March, isn't it?
Sometime in March, I think. But you can put a placeholder in maybe too.
That'd be great. I mean, I think we, we just need to make sure that we know that we have a clock that's ticking and we have a deadline.
Yeah, I'm gonna on the sixth and you can put.
Bill, it goes without saying that the same thing with regards to the review that you're making or for the B, for the best. We're, you're aware of obviously these timelines.
Yeah, we're choosing to, to get something to you in January.
Thank you.
We could schedule it maybe for the same date, but you'd have to have it in fairly soon. So, for the best, Bill?
I'm, I'm three weeks out for that, easily.
Yeah.
So you don't want to try to piggyback it on the January, these two together, well, two different hearings, yours will be the first of, in February?
Well, that's the board's call. I, I don't think I'm gonna get it to you until the third or fourth week of January.
Madam Chair, I think at this point in time, what we should do is, is kind of put a pencil this in for the very first meeting that we have in the, in the February timeframe.
Well, you gotta have something you can post as a draft, right? The public to review. So.
Correct. What you have, what you have is a draft, you already have a draft.
What we have is, yeah, it's an opinion with his, with his comments and suggestions and changes etc. Or, or for all intents and purposes, coming back and saying, this is a no-go for this, this other reason, right?
I doubt that.
Bill, it's up to you. If you wanted a public hearing held on the twentieth and if.
No, I, no, no, I, I'm saying is, is the, not the twentieth, I'm talking about the first week in February.
Oh, the first week in February?
Yes.
Okay, we'll shoot for it as a target.
Yes.
On the sixth again and see where you are, Bill, okay? Okay, the third of February, possibly pencil it in. Okay. You guys, I'm gonna try really hard to get this accessory apartment by law drafted, I'm really working hard on it. And I know you're working hard on accessory use. But we don't have, we can't act on it tonight because I just didn't get to it. Okay.
With, before we move off of that.
Yeah.
On some of these, I think we're gonna have to do. I think we're gonna have to do some extra work, really educate the public about what we're doing with them. And I don't. I don't completely know. What there is for a precedent for that in Hubbardston and what we can do are. Because I know when I've looked at some of the models from other towns, they've actually had like. PowerPoint presentations they've made publicly available online and stuff like that for some of these revisions.
Do you want to have a draft go to present first? Or do you want to do a PowerPoint before the draft?
Well, I. That's a good question.
I mean, there, there have been advantages to both, right? You could say what uses would you like to see, these are the common uses and you could try to pull the public, but.
Well, like a, a good example of what I've seen and it's from looking at the marijuana, the farm bylaws is when there's been. Some of the towns have done a really good job with it and they've put out either a PowerPoint or even just a PDF document. On, hey, here's what the old one was. Here's what the substantive changes are and, and done it almost with like a little infographic. And just, this is specifically what we're trying to accomplish with it. And this is why it's good for the town and this is what it's gonna mean to like the long-term ongoing tax base. So like those kinds of things there.
How would you get that going in COVID times, Eric?
Create it and put on social media, on the website.
You want to create a PowerPoint? Are you good with that? I'd be the last person to be.
Yeah, if there's an outline of some of the material. I know like with the. With the rate of development, like the, the letter that was circulated to the board with your comments is really pretty much an outline for doing that as it is. Where, hey, here's the changes that I made to this, here's why I made these changes.
Yeah, but that was a pre-existing bylaw that, yeah, this is new.
Well, I'm, I'm specifically referencing the rate of development. One in that context, like that one would be easy to do an information handout.
Yeah.
Some of the others I think would be more challenging, but I think it's just gonna help a lot with. We know there's gonna be a logjam of these things at the town meeting. And we don't know how the, how the discussion is gonna even go at the select board on some of these. So anything we can do to kind of get more information out into the ether. And, and really make people know that there's a reason why we're doing this, why we think it's. It's gonna be good for the town, but without making really any substantial changes to the appearance or like those kinds of things.
You know, the select board is offered to meet with us, it's a joint meeting. And maybe, maybe we should take them up on that. But we should make them instead of sitting in their back row, make them come and sit around the table and participate, I don't know, but. We can also have, you can also advertise. You, I mean, you, you have to advertise once you present it. But you could have, you could, I think you could also put in a legal ad for. The planning board is, it wants to, is, wants to gather public input for a bylaw, we could kind of do that, you want to do that?
Yeah, well, with some of these, like the farm bylaw, the marijuana bylaw, I think that's absolutely the case, because like here's. Here's an example. Like Rutland did with their agricultural use by law. They actually put together this PowerPoint presentation talking about all of the aspects. And why they did what they did and why they went more aggressive with it. And like, they went more aggressive with it because they thought that that would be more effective at preserving farmland.
Yeah.
By increasing the economic value of those parcels. But it goes through and it breaks down all of that in a way where somebody who's interested can follow. But, and, and I'm not saying that this is the kind of thing we need to do for all of them. I think for like the rate of development one, which I know is important to a lot of people. Because that was an issue that came up on the campaign trail for me a lot and it came up at town meeting. That's one that people are gonna care about a lot and I know from, from looking at it for so long. We're not really making any changes to, proposing any changes that. That are really gonna upset anything about the character of the town. It's just going to make the process easier and.
Especially for affordable.
Yeah, but, but I think the, the issue that comes up with that is we need to make it clear. That, that that easier for affordable housing is not a loophole that's gonna allow other stuff to happen. So I think we're gonna need to put in some effort to make sure people understand really what that means. That it's not, not a gateway.
Right. Well, maybe we need to have. A big public hearing prior to town meeting where we present our initiatives prior to the town meeting.
Yeah, I, I think that makes a lot of sense.
I, I would agree with that and I think we have, we have some substantial amount of. Work that is going to be presented from the planning board this coming, this coming June to the town. And I think it makes a lot of sense for us to do a form of a PR campaign. Because there's a lot of, there's a lot of information, there's a lot of differences in, in the various different bylaws that we're gonna be presenting. So having a, having a forum where we can present this here to the town, to those who are interested, obviously. To attend and then potentially even if we are going to put up PowerPoint presentations, but also even having say, for example, this ability to do this. Zero via Zoom, so people can actually see this here at, at their leisure subsequently is a very important communication mechanism.
Okay, I, I agree. We could actually send out, there's a town mailing list, we could even get lists out. To them and really try to put it together. Alright, Mallory and I'll work on that and dates and possibilities and talk it over with David and I'll visualize it as. Is the goal of, we'll have different presenters from the board with each one, right? But we'll all be there and each one should be accompanied by either a very clear handout or a PowerPoint that can be put up.
And I'll, out of the notes that you already sent out, I'll put together. I'd write PDF there. I'll put together a. Just quick like information sheet about the, the rate of development changes. Just as kind of an example of like how simple I think it could be.
Yeah.
Marijuana and accessory use, I think those are not gonna be simple, those are, those are gonna be presentations and a lot of work. Yeah. But like that really could be simple, we just have to like turn into the frequently asked questions.
Okay, but I'm thinking of, of having, this was actually something I think David discussed too, he says, oh, you know. Planning boards put together a whole new set of bylaws, you know, but they usually preceded by some kind of public. Meeting date where people can come and, and hear it all.
Kind of like meet the candidates.
Right, meet the bylaw. Otherwise, I think they get a chance of. Of, I don't want to say being submarine, but they get a, they get a chance. If they're, if people are just learning about some of the stuff at town meeting and they're particularly active people. There might be a misunderstanding that leads to opposition that wouldn't be there if there's the time to just kind of understand what was going on.
Here's a question, maybe for Bill though. If you, if you do this right around the time of when there's interest in it, you know, sort of, you know, two weeks before town meeting. And people come in, can you then make changes, having had a special? You know, something comes up that's really good, is it too late to change? Change it, change certain things in it?
No, well, the changes would come at our public hearings, when the public could get their input.
Right, so we've got to be pretty certain.
Be presenting our final product.
Okay.
And it's kind of like a too late.
Okay.
This is, this is more, this is more showcasing what is going to be presented and why this makes sense. And why the planning board is asking the town to, to endorse it, the other vote at the, at the town meeting.
But the question is, if you, if you want to have public input for this, for the sake of shaping the bylaw.
Those are two separate things. And that's why we, that's why we have, that's why, that's why we have public hearings. But I think that once the public hearing is completed, once these bylaws have been cast in stone from our perspective and have been, have been presented. And have been vetted out by the, by, 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 by the legal team and so forth. For us to make sure that this gets passed during our town meeting, we have to do our own due diligence and that is, we need to showcase this here. And again, present this here to the, to the townspeople, to the members of the public. And, and, and present to them why this makes sense. A lot of them may come back and say down the road, well, I never attended the public meeting, well. Well, this is, this is what, this is why, this is what we're doing and this is why we're doing it again. That's kind of like your second chance to do it. Be able to basically bring them, bring them into your fold.
Right, okay, so, so we want to do the public, this PowerPoint for the regular public hearing and then we can refine it if there are changes.
Yes, that can be refined, what cannot be, what cannot be refined is the bylaw.
Presentation of all of them prior to meeting, got the concept, we'll do it. Will you do, you'll do it for my rate of development?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good, okay, excellent, I totally agree with that.
You, you can petition the moderator and town council to present minor revisions at town meeting floor.
Okay.
But if you have a significant rewrite, the moderator and town council is not gonna let you do that on the floor.
That is correct, and we have, we have, we have precedent of this past summer where that was attempted. And it was, it was denied by town council.
Yeah, our, our, there was, somebody tried to do a motion from the floor, I believe it was actually on the rate of development, to do a floor amendment.
Correct, exactly.
Five years on this specific issue. The town moderator found that to.
That's right, that's right. Okay, alright, well, I have. I have that process and again, what we're trying to get is best rate of development, the in-law and the farm use. Right? Okay, alright, we're good, we're good, okay. I want to wrap up here. If that's, if we're good enough to do that. So I want to let everybody know that the EEA grant. To revise a solar bylaw was passed or was granted, we got the grant, I haven't heard from the people yet, but. I did point out to Bill that in my description of what we wanted, because I put in a fair amount of detail about all things. You know, how we were really ready to go on this, what we really, you know, had discussed. That, but I also put a component in that said to combine it with best, so now I'm gonna decouple those. Because we're gonna do best, because the solar one won't be ready for the summer, but it will be done right. And, you know, ninety percent of the issues were all unrelated to best, more than ninety percent. But we do need to, with the best bylaw, have some way to. Or in the solar bylaw to cross-reference it so you can retrofit the solar systems, I mean, the, yeah, right? So you just need to keep in mind that we're decoupling them, but we still have to have a way. To get those systems in the solar field without rewriting the whole.
No, I, I will, I will state that in the bylaw that I have put forth. There is some wording regarding the allowance of battery energy source system in solar fields. So I think, I think we are kind of covered there and you may eventually, you may actually, matter of fact, point them. Once we have our best bylaw ready for them to read that and potentially also. Make reference to that in the solar bylaw.
Right. Okay, yeah, that's probably the way to do it. And then if they have to tie in like setbacks or something, they can. Because they're not in the commercial district, our solar.
Exactly, and that, and that is the one, that is the one exemption that we did indicate in here and that, and that needs to be there for also incorporated. As we're discussing the, 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 the overlay district.
Okay, so Bill, you know that and we can do that, right? That makes sense to you?
I was just gonna tell you, that's an inherent conflict right off the bat.
Meaning.
Which we'll have to figure out.
Okay.
Okay, I saw, it's just, just, okay.
When I get the MRPC people that are supposed to be working with us, I will inform them of the issue and I'll have them talk to you, Bill. I'll call you.
Fine, I, I have a feeling the best will be in front of the solar bylaw, so they'll have to customize their bylaw to the best.
Right, but I don't want them to go hire an electrical engineer and all the rest of it if they don't need to. Because then we won't get it passed till twenty twenty-five, you know? So.
Right.
I'd rather shrink the budget and get it done ahead of time because we took this piece out than have it drag on. While they try to reinvent the wheel, the U R D. Anyway, everybody understands, so it's fine. Okay, so. Then I also want to tell everybody, I got a letter this afternoon from the Attorney General's Office, or I told. Told you on the way in, but. We, the signed bylaw, they've asked for a thirty-day extension on, this was passed last summer. In addition to the ninety days, I guess, I don't know how. It seems to be way more months than that to me, but anyway, they sent this letter. And town council agreed to another thirty-day extension. So they're gonna match it up with this case law that's about freedom of speech and sign bylaws. So we may wind up, who knows, revising that law, bylaw and having it rejected. So that may be another one that we might have to fix and resubmit. So anyway, hopefully not, we'll see what happens. It didn't seem like they had any specific target, it was. Just a complicated bylaw and they didn't get to it is kind of how I read it, but we'll see what happens. I don't have, okay, so going down the list, no other matters unreasonably anticipated except that letter. Well, the aquifer issue, yes, Bill.
Yes.
So this came up because it, this whole idea of what the aquifer favorability zone is, and since it sweeps in a whole lot of the town, including the gravel pit area, although there was this question of which map that is, we really need to fix that glitch in the bylaw if the reference is wrong and get the right map connected and made part of the bylaw. But the question is, you get a question like this country club situation, the 28 Howard Lane or or the big gravel pit area where it says, you know, one septic, you know, that you could put just one house, one unit. I mean, there's got to be some way to, to do exceptions to that for clustered housing and it seems to me it's just such a dead end. It just stops everything where it says it'll, should be limited to one house. It isn't one house per two acres or, I don't know, anyway.
Well, it is, it's one house per lot.
Per lot, yes, one house per lot, but doesn't define a lot. So that 300 acre lot is a lot.
Well, if you subdivide it, it won't be, but, no, see, under state law, if you're in aquifer, you're in a special protection district. And your septic loading is much reduced. In other words, you want a bigger lot for a septic system because that is what is the principal pollutant of wells and everything else. So that's the logic behind that. But since all of these bylaws have been written and edited, the state has come up with modifications of that. Because you could do a wastewater treatment plant, which is far, far more protective of groundwater than septic systems. And there are all sorts of other things that the DEP, Department of Environmental Protection will let you do in an aquifer overlay district. Then a lot of towns have caught up to that, but Hubbardston is not caught up to what the current standards are.
So we need to also add to our list, fixing the aquifer favorability bylaw.
Yeah, well, and so the master plan came up or they published in the master plan an aquifer overlay or an aquifer map. And that is not the map that's referenced in the zoning bylaw. So it's an informational map, but it doesn't carry any regulatory, wait. The map that is referenced in the zoning bylaw is the one that my office took in 2017, I think, from GIS. And while they have similarities, you, you can't use one for regulatory and the, the other or anything else. The, the one prepared by my office and referenced in the bylaw depicts the act first for the bylaw. And can that be fixed? That they should be synonymous. In other words, whoever did the GIS map from the master plan should have referenced the one that we did because it's a regulatory overlay district. Can it be changed? Absolutely.
But even with your map, it's still one septic system per lot.
Well, my map, the map didn't change the zoning bylaw.
Right, so the bylaw, if we're going to build like, I don't have the feasibility study back for 57 yet, but if they say, okay, we'd like to build, I don't know, 50 units of senior housing on this, maybe that's too much because only 15 acre lot. Let's say we want to build 25 in five, you know, five unit buildings or four unit buildings and they would, you, you can't do any of that with the way.
Well, no, not the way it's written. You'd have to do a 40B or a, um, modified version of a 40W P, which is called an LIP, a local initiative program. And when you file for a 40B, um, local zoning is allowed to be waived, but the, the permit granting authority is the zoning board of appeals. And local zoning and local permits are allowed to be waived for cause.
Yeah, but what about, what about our, like our 28 George Howard Lane? Would they then have to subdivide it, put in two septic, two septics or?
Well, they're not in the aquifer district.
They're not, they're okay.
No, no. And I, I don't, they need, so I didn't want to, uh, say anything about whether they have the ability to subdivide or not in a public hearing. They need to hire a professional to make a presentation to the planning board. I don't think that that's something we want to address on a public hearing, public meeting.
Okay, but you think the aquifer, we do need to straighten out the glitch with the master plan. But you think we can live with the aquifer bylaw as it stands? Um, if we get.
No, it should be, it should be updated. The map, the map can stand, but the bylaw itself is overly restrictive and doesn't, it doesn't reference any modern standards. That bylaw, I don't think has been substantially changed. I mean, in 2017, I think we changed the map because the other map was 1981 or 82. And it, and then there was only a paper copy that was available. So my office created a digital copy, a digital plan that could be easily referenced. And I think that's the only change that we made to the uses and the actual function of the aquifer district. So, yeah, the zoning bylaw itself needs to be revisited.
Well, think about it and how much it would cost to have you revisit it because I know nothing.
Oh, geez. Okay.
You know, it's, I read it, sometimes I just want to pull my hair out when I read, try to.
Yeah. It's got conflicts with other parts of the bylaw and all sorts of things, yeah.
It does, for example, the subdivision bylaw allows you to build 15 houses a year, but our growth restriction by law, I mean, there are many contradictions, but I do think this is going to come back to haunt us and and we need to get the map and the bylaw straightened out, both for the master plan and for going forward to be, uh, to reflect the new standards. So we can do some, some cluster, you know, some concrete housing of some sort.
Yep.
And it wouldn't just be restricted to S H I units that qualify for the 40B. All right. Lots of things to think about. Uh, implementation chapter of the master plan begins after the first of the year, so, um, nothing more enforcement. I don't suppose. Getting a snicker next to me.
It's one of those things we need a joint meeting for.
Okay, all right. Any, um, no more public comments. The public's long gone. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn or have any other thing you want to bring up before we make that motion since it's not debatable?
I'll make that motion.
I second the motion. Steiger.
Home and side.
All right.
Thanks everyone, appreciate it. Have a good evening.